We will reconvene back into open session having just been closed. And we begin the meeting. You would rise and join me in the presence of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we're going to have a National Anthem as well.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight Were the round that we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, its bursting blaze, as it flew through the night as our flag was still there? Oh, say those last stars spangled their night's wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the home, home of the home.
Thank you, Rika. Okay, at this point, approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandra, please call roll.
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Lashawn Carey.
Very good. It's just honoring excellence.
No, I'm sorry.
Dallas?
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Hope everyone had a good holiday. We have a wonderful honoring excellence for you this evening. As you can tell, the room is packed and we're looking forward to recognizing several individuals this evening. You just heard moments ago from the Liberty High School Chamber Choir under the direction of Dr. Rika Harith. They always do such an awesome job and it's kind of become a tradition that we have them sing the National Anthem in January. So, we appreciate Rika and her group coming. And on that note, we thought we would also take an opportunity to recognize a few members of Allstate in the areas of fine arts. We have several students with us this evening. And when I call your name, I will ask you just to join me at the podium and then we'll give this special group of students a round of applause. First, representing the Allstate Choir from Liberty High School, Hans Harith. Hans, if you would join me here. Next, Cecilia Cook from Liberty High School, Allstate Orchestra. Next is Zachary Garland Foster, Allstate Jazz Band, Liberty High School. Next, from Liberty North High School, Matthew Hudson, Allstate Band. And Allstate Band member George Schramm from Liberty North High School. And Fine Arts Director Erin Money, who is with us tonight, just gave me a late note to also make mention Travis Geyer from Liberty High School. He was an Allstate Band member alternate, correct, Mr. Money? So let's give him a round of applause as well.
Congratulations.
We will get him a certificate as well. So, Travis?
Dallas? Can I also, we also had a tenor alternate, Savan Hayes, was a tenor alternate for Allstate Choir and has also been awarded a very large scholarship in voice to Amute.
Thank you for that, Rika. So congratulations again, students, and you guys continue to represent us so well in the areas of fine art. So let's give them another round of applause. As we move along, then, we also are joined by some staff from Shoal Creek Elementary. If you guys could come up here and join me here at the podium, some fifth grade, the fifth grade team at Shoal Creek. Really neat event over at Shoal Creek just prior to the Christmas holiday and they submitted a summary that I thought I would share with you and then we'll give them recognition. In early November, the fifth grade teachers at Shoal Creek Elementary started a project by posing this question to our students. How can we raise awareness about hunger in our community? What followed included research, collaboration, critical thinking, communication, and problem solving. Several days of research partnered with visiting speakers from City Union Mission, United Way, and a local food pantry helped us to form ideas about the causes and effects of hunger as well as what they could do to help. Students wrote research papers and action plans. They partnered with the Digital Innovations and PEAK classes at LHS to help create informative videos, skits, websites, and other visual presentation. But the question remained, how can we raise awareness? On Thursday, December 11th, each of our fifth graders invited a community member to an empty bowl lunch at Shoal Creek. The students and guests enjoyed a soup lunch with donations provided by Sam's Club, Hy-Vee, and Price Shopper. The fifth graders shared their learning with their guests and gave each of them a pottery bowl created in art class as a reminder to pay it forward and help with our hunger initiative. Much to our surprise, guests at the lunch wanted to make donations to help fight hunger. A little over $700 was collected and donated to harvesters during our volunteer visit on January 16th. The 125 community members in attendance left with a better understanding about the hunger problem right here in Liberty and our students had effectively raised awareness about hunger. And Greg, I think if you could pop up a couple of those photos that we had from the event, we were going to share a couple of those, so we may get those up in just a moment. One thing that really stood out about this project is the fact that children can make a difference. The fifth grade teachers saw this firsthand when our students led a food drive at Shoal Creek benefiting the mayor's Christmas tree and collected over 7,000 non-perishable food items. Students gave of their time over winter break ringing bells for Salvation Army, collecting donations for the KC Pet Project, and Parkville Animal Shelter, making blessing bags for the homeless, collecting personal care items for synergy services, visiting with elderly residents at Newmark Care Center, and donating gifts to several families in need. I think they've been busy at Shoal Creek here in recent weeks. I had a chance to attend that event just prior to the Christmas break and it was phenomenal and you guys should certainly be commended. And there are some of the photos from that day. With us today, if you maybe just step forward when I say your name, Katie Arnold, Suzanne Hudson, Susan Luskey, and Jen Zazadny. Is that correct?
Close.
Close. Let's give these guys a big round of applause. Here is a certificate and please, 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 share this with all of your students tomorrow and tell them all, great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. With us tonight also is the principal at Shoal Creek, Kristy Bowman, and the assistant principal at Shoal Creek, Steve Myrick. So tremendous, tremendous work taking place over at Shoal Creek. Next, I want to introduce you to Janet Bartnik, the Director of the Liberty Parks and Recreation. Janet is here to speak on behalf of L-Chat, Liberty Community Health Action Team. Janet, the podium is yours.
Thank you, Dallas, for that wonderful introduction. And yes, a few of you may notice my name has changed since the last time I was here. I was married in February. First, I'd like to thank you guys very much for your participation in the Healthy Communities Research Group project that's been going on for about two years. We're getting ready to start our third year. And one of the most exciting things that has happened from that is not just the synergy of the four partners who are coming together to combat obesity among 10 to 14-year-olds. We do have the city, Clay County Public Health Center, Liberty Public Schools, and of course, Liberty Hospital working together on this project. Very excited about it. But our stakeholders group has come together and formed what we're calling the Liberty Community Health Action Team. It is a health coalition and that health coalition is working toward the development of a community health improvement plan. I'm going to look at Gary and make sure I use the right word for a chip because I would cheat and call it a chip. So anyway, we're working toward that and one of the exciting things we have this year is the beginning of our implementation of the program. So we have four different strategies and one of the big ones for us is celebrating some of our early successes. Thank you, Sandra, for providing the letters that our Liberty Community Health Action Team put together. And if I could take a moment, I'd like to read two paragraphs from that so all of the public can hear just how great your new wellness program is. The implementation of the district's wellness program provides staff with direction for nutrition promotion and education to teach the children of Liberty how to make healthy food choices and the value of daily physical activity. Plans to increase health and physical education at the middle school level serve as evidence of the district's commitment. The district has extended its education of students beyond the classroom by providing trails, walking clubs, girls-on-the-run programs, and community gardens at several of the school sites throughout the district with plans for more gardens in the future. Further, promoting wellness within the district staff recognizes the value of educators modeling healthy behaviors for students. Beyond the wellness program, the adoption and implementation of the district's healthy vending policy places Liberty Public Schools as a leader among other districts in the Kansas City metro area. It is our pleasure, there are a few of us here today, Gary Zabreck from Clay County Public Health, Donna K. Taylor from the Liberty Parks and Recreation, and Becky Gossett, one of your own, serves on the team. We'd like to commend you for your work on the wellness program and very excited to see the implementation. We know it will take some time to get it fully implemented and to truly see change because we're getting, what we're getting at really at the root of it is our culture and that will take some time. So thank you all very much for your commitment. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Janet. Before Erin Money, our Fine Arts Director, sneaks out of here, I meant earlier to make mention, as you enter our District Administration Center, you may notice the art on the walls in the open areas. That is all student work and Erin has put in a lot of effort along with his team. It looks great and we appreciate all the effort you guys have put into that. Let's give those guys a round of applause. Before we wrap up, you may have noticed a few tokens of appreciation at your respective desks here this evening. It is a tradition here in Liberty Public Schools in January that we recognize our School Board of Education for all the efforts, all the volunteer hours you put in each and every year. And before I go any further, I thought I would read a few paragraphs from a press release issued by the Missouri State School Boards Association. Missourians benefit every day from the dedicated energies and countless hours devoted by a group of more than 3,600 men and women from communities across the state. These public servants are elected by local constituents and do not receive compensation for their tireless efforts. They are the local school board members of Missouri. During the week of January 25th through January 31st, 2015, communities across the state will honor the dedicated service of their local boards of education during School Board Recognition Week as proclaimed by Governor Jay Nixon. The goal is to build awareness and understanding of the important function an elected board of education plays in communities and schools. All Missouri citizens are asked to recognize the important contributions of these men and women and focus attention on the vital role these public officials play in the education of Missouri's children. I do understand next week is the actual week that is dedicated and we will promote that throughout our various outlets in the district. But as is tradition, we thought with us getting really close to that, we would recognize all of our members here this evening. So, audience, please join me in giving our seven board members a big round of applause. Mr. Connor, I thought you were going to reach for the gavel.
I'm not.
At this time, I am going to ask each of our ELT members from Liberty Public Schools to come forward and they will present each board member with their respective framed certificate. Becky Gossett here, Dee Scott Connor, Ms. Marlee Williams, Mr. David Evans, Cindy Sullivan. Please present, Ms. Charlene Armitage, Jennifer Coram, Ms. Kim Marie Graham, Mr. Steve Anderson, Angel Marie, Bob Bogalar, Mr. Andy Rothman, and last, you get two, Ms. Lori Tritt. And before we wrap up this celebration, and we'll have an opportunity to thank our board members at our break here in just a minute, I thought I would point out for the second consecutive year, courtesy of the Early Childhood Center, we have a "Thank You LPA" School Board" banner, which I think is pretty neat. So, that is going to wrap up honoring excellence for tonight. Again, board members, thank you for your service to our students and community.
Very good. Thank you, Dallas. Yeah, it's not often that we get that, so. We are, we do have a tradition after honoring excellence to congratulate those who are honored tonight, our Allstate musicians, our fifth grade group from Shoal Creek, if you wouldn't mind just sticking around for a few more minutes here. And if anybody would like to address the board at the public comments portion of the meeting, there are some blue cards right outside the door, return those to someone up here. They will get those in my hands and we'll get you to the podium shortly. So, right now, we will take a 10-minute break and congratulate those who were honored tonight. Thank you. Okay, we're back. Sound like Johnny Carson.
You have a chemically sealed managed star.
What's that? Did we make any blue cards? Looks like we didn't get any blue cards. Is there no one that would like to address the board during public comment? If not, I do want to take the opportunity just to make one little announcement. Today, filing for school board candidacy ended at 5:00 and we had two people sign up to run for school board. So because there's only two people signed up and there are two seats available, there will not need to be an election in April. And in April, we will swear in once again David Evans. And also, who will be new to our board, is Eileen Houston Stewart. So, congratulations both of you. I'm very jealous. But no election necessary in April. First time I've been on the board that that's happened. I'm locked up over here, so I. We are ready for consent. Does anybody have a motion for consent? You have that pulled up? Anyone? Do we need to approve a minute first? I was like part of the.
0.01 is approval?
Yes. Oh, we skip approval of minutes. It's part of the consent. I was wrong. I was wrong. Do you need a motion to approve the consent agenda items 3.01 through? 6.03. Is there a motion to that effect? Is there a second? Second. Sandra, will you please call roll?
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Lashawn Carey.
Very good. That takes us to Section 7, Unfinished Business and Legislative Platform Revolution.
You do have a couple of documents within your board packet this evening. One is a draft letter to legislators in terms of those that represent us in the House of Representatives and the Senate in Missouri. And a second document containing legislative priorities. We've been talking about this the last couple of months and are ready to send that your way for review and feedback in terms of soliciting feedback from the board. So appreciate those that have already chimed in. This evening, that is solely presented for first read. So if you'll take a look at that over the course of the next couple of weeks and provide any feedback, then we'll continue to work that document. Our hope and our desire to be able to share that with our legislators and then follow that up with personal visits, be it during the legislative day in February that MSBA puts on or periodically over the course of the session as some of you are able to slip away to Jefferson City. So appreciate your feedback. The themes contained therein include well-being, include funding, include continuous improvement, things that you typically would see in legislative session, but then also a little forward thinking and trying to convey to our legislators the work that we're doing in the Northland through partnerships and certainly through initiatives that we have going on in Liberty Public Schools. Our attempt is to try to highlight and capture a couple of things that kind of rise to the surface, albeit we could send pages and pages and pages their way as far as the good work that's taking place on a daily basis. So we'll continue to work that document and come back to you with an updated version. Appreciate your input on that.
Very good. So that is yours for first read. Do you, at what point do you want this approved? Are you looking for an approval at our February meeting?
We could do it at our regular meeting. We could do it sooner. We could do it at our study session on the 3rd.
And if you wanted to discuss more at the study session?
Perhaps we could bring it back to the study session with an updated version from the feedback that we received. We can talk about as far as when to place it on the agenda for action.
See where we're at there.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Any further comments, questions?
The only comment I would have in this word to people who are going to be watching at home is that we're going to have the next month to be looking at this and it's a document going to our legislators. So any feedback that anyone has about the document, they should send our way.
It's online.
It's online under WordNet for today's meeting.
Very good. Okay, that takes us to Section 8, Report from the Administration.
The first item, 8.01, is Academic Services. And providing that report to us this evening is Dr. Jennifer Coram.
First of all, I would certainly like to, I know there's been plenty of thank yous that have gone around, but I don't think there's enough to be able to thank you for the service that you do, certainly for Liberty, for us as administrators, but also for our students and our families. So, a quick thank you from Academic Services. We have some really exciting information going on and I know that Dr. Williams has shared some of our information on Clarity Bright Bites. And I was actually the one in the fall that came up and talked a little bit about our first survey. So when we received our survey information back, some of the focus areas that we will be looking at for the end of this year and for next year is talking about the four Cs and talking about collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. So we've seen those in our schools and we're going to continue to focus on those from an administrator standpoint. And then the other piece is digital citizenship and that is a focus that we should have for all of our students and staff. So those are two of our big areas. We will be taking another survey, the same survey, as a follow-up. We will be taking that in February. So we're all very excited to see some of the changes. I am through elementary because our first, our first survey was when students just received their devices. So it will be very interesting to see and exciting to see that growth. A couple other things in Academic Services, we do, just so you're aware, if anyone says, we do have a statewide tornado drill in March, on March 3rd. We have several in your packets, several celebrations from Donovan and some of their work with Character Ed and from Warren Hills in talking about their tech cafe. And in our secondary, we've been working very hard with Carnegie and STEM and their focus with the KC STEM Alliance. And they have, secondary principals have also started learning rounds where they are visiting other schools from their feeder schools to see how they can support students as they make those transitions from elementary to middle and high school. So a lot of exciting things happening in Academic Services and once again, thank you for your service.
Very good.
Any questions for Dr. Coram or Academic Services?
Yes. Of course, any questions?
I started to ask that and then you were walking away.
No, go right ahead. Oh, now that I'm up here, nobody has questions? Thank you.
Thanks. Next is Financial Report, 8.02, and Ms. Cindy Sullivan.
I would like to echo Dr. Coram's sentiments and tell you all, thank you very much for your service. We do appreciate your support and the time that you give to the district. Pre-status quo on the financial front this month, the fund balance is at 18.68, holding steady, right where we want it to be. Dr. Tucker and I spent a short amount of time on Friday on the phone with Standard and Poor's, moving forward with our lease certificate purchase. Next month, we will bring that market rate to you for approval and Dr. or Mr. Anderson and I have spent some time looking at numbers to make sure we know, we want to tie down that $7 million figure to make sure that's what we want it to be. But that looks like we're moving ahead as it should, so we'll have that brought to you next month at the work session. And that's really all I have. Everything else is pretty business as usual. Any questions?
This is something we spent a lot of time on in our work session, so.
Right.
We've got through that, the binder prone. Very good.
The other item to add to Ms. Sullivan's credit and her staff is in preparation for FY 2016. The work is underway in regard to setting up budget meetings with principals and directors and I think on record pace.
Yep.
Here, not even at the end of January. And I think have concluded all of your meetings or nearly all?
All of the, yes. All of the building budgets have been actually turned in, so that has never been done this quickly before. So now we begin the process of going through them with the directors and looking to see if we're needing to pare down or what we're needing to do or to make sure that everything that they have turned in on a zero-based budget is what they should be turning in. They all did a fabulous job. I can't give them enough recognition for their first time out doing what we anticipated they would do and what we asked them to do. I will conclude meetings with all the other directors this week and so I should have everything turned in from them, probably by the end of February. If we could just get revenue figured out, we would have a great head start on our budget for next year. But zero-based budgeting has been received well and handled well and I'm really thrilled at how well it's going.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
8.03 is our Human Resources Report, so Dr. Bogalar?
Very good. Thank you. Attached to that line item on board docs are a lot of different documents and I won't highlight all of them, but I do want to give you an update out of the report, first of all, on the Evergreen Study. They've given us their draft recommendations. We shared those draft recommendations with Team Liberty and now our engagement and process of refining that. It's probably the biggest, most timely element there. Representatives from Evergreen are going to be joining Team Liberty face-to-face at their next meeting, which is scheduled for February 3rd, so we'll have them there to actually take some of that feedback then and begin the process of finalizing those draft recommendations. Everything's moving on schedule with that regard and we've got an updated, again, chart of the progress of that study on there. I also have a report on there on our staffing summary. I'm going to pull up just a few slides to highlight. Rather than going through all of the slides in there, I want to pull out just some pertinent ones that I think are important to talk about in this staffing summary and some of the work that we're doing and looking at our staffing summary and then setting some goals for the future. As you know, that the human, from a human resources standpoint, recruiting and retaining your highest quality staff, especially your certificated staff, is a very high priority to the school system, so that really is our spotlight or our focus. On the slide of the presentation that's included, I want to pull out the certificated applications. This is from last year's. This is from last year's batch of hires and you see a trend here. These are applications that have been submitted to the school system across all vacancies and you'll see a trend really going from 2010 to the present that's kind of a downward trend. We saw that a few years ago as we were talking about that, you know, we saw that that was caused in, to a high degree, by the economy. Obviously, when the economy bottomed out and jobs were, you know, were downsizing, employers were downsizing significantly, it put a lot more people on the market. And so we were kind of seeing the byproduct of that. We knew that as the economy recovered, we'd see that decline and we certainly have seen that. 1902 applicants kind of brings us back to where we were pre-economic downslide there in 2007, 2008, 2009 in that arena. Now, normally you'd look at that and that would be pretty concerning, but you want to disaggregate it and look obviously where you're, what areas specifically are seeing the greatest impact. Some areas, we have ample opportunity to staff with candidates of choice. Other areas are already at kind of a shallow pool. Their critical shortage areas recognized by the state, certainly we see that in our own district too. So when you disaggregate that by elementary applications, you see that downward trend exists there as well. Still not significantly alarming. It's right at about where the levels were prior to the economic downturn across the country. And then your secondary positions, your special ed positions, your specialty positions, we see that same downward trend returning to those levels of load of work before the economic downturn. When I talked with Dr. Tucker about, these specifically, of course, his first question and the first question on my front burner as well, is even though we're seeing these lower numbers in terms of total applications, are we seeing a decrease in quality? And so that's obviously an important thing to pay attention to as well. And if we look at the strength of pool by reason, these are people who apply for the school system. They indicate their reason for seeking out employment with Liberty Public Schools and it gives us a chance to see where, you know, from which of those batches are we hiring and what's the strength of those pools. We use Gallup to do an online screener to kind of help us see how our applicants compare and how our hires compare to the applicants all across the country who apply for jobs. And this is in comparison to hundreds of thousands of teacher applications nationwide for school systems that use Gallup. And I've highlighted in yellow the three areas that produced the largest quantity of applicant interest, desirable location, reputation of the district, word-of-mouth referrals tend to draw most people to our district, which is great. It says a lot about the standing of our school system and the messaging of our school system out to the public, that people who know Liberty Public Schools are seeking out employment in this quantity. This also correlates fairly consistently with the number of our hires. So if you look at reputation of the district, that was our largest indicator of applicant interest in the system. We hired, our largest batch of job offers came also from that same segment of the population. The percent above the mean, above the national mean on the Gallup indicator of all of those that applied based on that reason was 61.4%. So obviously, a national mean means 50% above, 50% below. So 61% of 0.4% of those who expressed interest in the district are actually outperforming the mean. That means that some of the better candidates across the country are gravitating to our district. It's a very good sign. Of those, our system for getting the best and brightest out in front of our principals so that they would interview and consider and then give recommendations for hire, the 20 that were hired for reputation of the district, 95% of those outperformed the national mean. So very encouraging in terms of the quality of the candidates coming through. An average result, 79 percentile for the average result. You see that for desirable location, the average result on their screener interview was 84. So very encouraging in terms of the quality, even though we're seeing a steady decline in the total number of applicants that are interested in the district, we're seeing very good indication that the quality is still there and very much in strength. When you break it down and look at our new class of hires by the type of position they came to fill, you see across the elementary that of the 91 new hires that we made, 28 of those went into kindergarten through 5th grade positions. That's not surprising, given the fact that our population is so large across our elementary schools. 14 of those went into special service positions, so special ed position received 11 new hires. And then across the other subject areas at the secondary level, you see English kind of stands out as an area of higher in comparison to some of the other positions as well. And then basically, non-teacher roles, you've got admin counselors, social workers, et cetera. 17 of our new hires came from that. Obviously, the five admin, we've got a few of them sitting right here around the table of our new hires, so they did very well in their interview. As far as our staff as a whole, certificated FTE by year, this is now broadening that microscope, if you will, out to all of our certificated staff. You see the trend of our population going back quite a ways. This is as far back as the data we have collected when we only had 270 FTE in the district. We now have 858. Our district has grown significantly since 1990-91 and you see obviously that our staff to educate those students have also increased. The FTE, if you notice, the FTE is held fairly steady in this window of time where we've really been monitoring our FTE counts and the budget constraints, obviously, that drive a lot of that is indicative of why that line flattens out a little bit over the last couple of years. The reconfiguration in the school district obviously accounted for some of that drop as well. The certificated retention rate, this is also a piece of data we look at very closely. Nationally speaking, the turnover rate for school systems like ours is around 12% on average across the nation. Obviously, that varies significantly within region. In the Midwest, for us, this is our third year of having 93% of our certificated staff return. I think this is great, great news in terms of the staying power of other schools like ours. And that trend is even high in comparison going back to 2001, 2002. We, every year, offer an early notification incentive. This is for the purpose of helping folks who know that they are planning to resign at the end of the year, just get the word to us earlier so that we can post positions and go after candidates at the time when the candidates are more prevalent in the applicant pool. The best candidates obviously get job offers very quickly from surrounding school systems and so it helps us to also be in a position to offer those positions quickly. This year, our early notification incentive actually resulted in 27 employees on the certificated and classified side taking advantage of that. That's up significantly. Last year, we had eight take advantage of that. So that's great. I mean, it's one of those things where these are folks, obviously, an early notification incentive is causing people to resign. No one would resign for that amount of money, but the folks that are knowing, they're notifying us or, so to me, that's really the biggest win for kids, is that folks are recognizing that they need to know this by us as early as possible. And then this shows a breakdown of the different positions that feed into that 27 that responded to that early notification incentive. So that's just a very quick nutshell, if you will, of that presentation. Obviously, the full presentation is attached along with the other documents that we've included as a part of our report for administration. So if you have any questions, you can do that.
Questions for Dr. Bogalar?
Thank you.
Appreciate you sharing that information. In addition to the document that I've provided for you in the superintendent's report, did have a couple of other items to update you on. This week is a, skip Steve. I've done this a couple of months in a row. Operations, we'll hear from operations first. How's that?
He's the new guy, right?
Just a couple of things, I'll kind of draw out of the report. First, as you might notice, we've been working with all the various directors within the department to kind of draw in and bring in additional data and information into the report, give you some statistics in terms of how we're looking at work or so forth. Part of that is tied to some of the data team efforts, but it's also, I think, we're intending to use this more as kind of a monthly report. It'll go out to the district leadership team. We're going to use this to push this out to Team Liberty as well and just to kind of give them the better feeling flavor for what's going on in the operations department. The construction update, I think the only thing I'd point out of here rather than getting any of the specifics, is you'll notice at the very end, the Liberty High School project, the anticipated substantial completion date has been pushed to August now. I am not concerned with that. I think that's, you know, the final tune-up, equipping the building with the, making sure everything's kind of sealed up and ready to go for the start of the school year. We're continuing to watch that very carefully and closely, but again, it's the, November was really a problem for us. And so hopefully, as January looks a little bit better and into February, that might help us catch up.
November was a problem because of weather.
Weather.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And the last thing I would add, in kind of parallel to Cindy's report, she and I have been working very closely on the parallel track on the capital planning in looking at framing that a little bit differently from perhaps how you've seen that in the past and working very closely with the directors. Is there soliciting input information from all the various buildings? And look forward to kind of reporting that out to you once we have that all together in a consolidated report. With that, if you have to take any questions.
Are you seeing, totally separate a little bit, but are you seeing higher turnover in transportation this year compared to other years? Are you aware?
You know, I probably, you know, again, the six months I've been here, I don't know how to measure that up against the past. I know it's a struggle to hire and retain drivers.
Right.
I know that just more anecdotally from what they're experiencing right now. I don't know what the trend, what the trend maybe has been.
I know it's always been
Yeah.
Hard to find individuals and keep them, but it just seems like I'm seeing a lot of new faces.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's been fairly consistent.
Okay. So you're not seeing?
We, in fact, we moved to kind of hiring some floats or temporaries for the purpose of kind of moving into spots because they need to fill the seats quicker than they can find a way to fill the seats. And so we've done some transitionary type work.
And the training, how we kind of get in front of the training.
And I've heard that from other districts in conversations with other superintendents and also with districts that contract out their transportation and that the companies that they work with are having a difficult time filling vacancies. So I think that just confirms that shortage.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Anderson? Additions to my report include, this week is a busy week on both the federal and state level as it relates to State of the Union this evening with the President's remarks. Tomorrow evening, the Governor and his remarks concerning Missouri and the state of the state. My piece is a little bit smaller in that we are getting ready to deliver the update for the district or state of the district and am working with Dallas on that. On the State of the State address that the Governor is going to be communicating tomorrow evening, that really sets the stage for the legislative process as it relates to budgeting. And so we'll be watching that closely, knowing that there are a couple of key items that will likely be communicated tomorrow night. Priorities as it relates to education, but then certainly issues concerning Ferguson and things going on within our state, within our region, both on the eastern side and the western side, and knowing that that's of critical importance to Missouri. So we'll certainly be listening, but then also watching as that makes its way through the legislative session in terms of the budgeting piece. Along those same lines regarding the legislature, you're also provided each Friday, Friday update and a list of bills that we're currently tracking. So feel free to look at those and provide any remarks or any thoughts along the way. We're utilizing Team Liberty as a venue to which we communicate items regarding the legislature and things going on. So we'll look to communicate information through them as well as we meet with legislators and see the bills that are making their way through. Those were the only items that I had to mention in respect to the superintendent's report unless there are questions from you all.
Very good.
That concludes our administration reports.
Thank you. Upcoming meeting dates are listed there. Monday, we will meet the first Monday in February as usual, 6:00 here at the DAC. And then our regular February meeting will be on a Tuesday as it is every year, on February 17th. And the rest of the meetings are listed there as well. Board of Education reports, any committee reports? Don't know. Audit Finances met again like they always do to review.
We didn't have a meeting this month that I got responses back from most of them that they reviewed the financial statements and had any questions.
As is more. Very good. Nothing else, then? Let's just to board remarks. Anything? Quite a group tonight.
On behalf of all of us, thank you for the gift, everybody. I mentioned that earlier, but I, it never ceases, I've always surprised myself because this is my sixth January, my sixth board appreciation night, and I always forget it till I walk in and there's this stuff all over the desk. And it's very nice of the district to do that, so thanks for all you do on behalf of all of us. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
So, ma'am.
A second. Sandra, will you please call roll?
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?